You all set? Chris? Nelson? Okay. We call a meeting to all of us. If we could rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do have one public announcement from the library. The fall library hours begin next week. Wednesday evening hours have been added to the schedule. Fall library hours are Monday through Thursday, 10 o'clock a.m. until 8:30 p.m., Friday, 12:30 p.m. until 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 10 o'clock a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Thanks. Anybody else have any public announcements this evening? No? Next on the agenda, under action discussion items, discussion on ways to generate revenue and reduce costs. And this was a special meeting that Kenny had proposed to see if we can all try to come up with some ideas on how to generate revenues and reduce costs. And Kenny did send out in advance a few ideas. I sent out some ideas last night, and then Tom provided us with some early this afternoon. So, Ken, do you want to start?
I can start. I just want to see how we want to go about this. I mean, do we just want to talk about everybody's ideas first and then see if any have merit and then work on some of those?
Yeah.
All right. Let me touch upon some of the ideas that I propose. The first one in the packet says, ensure that we receive all meals tax monies due to us. I guess this is something that I read in one of the pamphlets we get, whether it is municipal or the BGN or something. I guess it's a free electronic request by a taxpayer, goes to Mass Department of Revenue. The idea is that if a business is struggling and they're not paying their taxes and they make a lot of business, we want to make sure that we are aware of that and don't issue them a permit ahead of time and keep abreast of what kind of situation they're in. Because if they go bankrupt or if they, you know, unimpful pay their bills, the town's not going to receive the meals tax. So I guess it's basically, we want to make sure that we don't leave the revenue on the table and we require the businesses to supply a certificate of good standing at its next renewal application. So that means it's a yearly renewal of restaurants. So we would want to make sure that before we, part of the renewal process would be to make sure that we get one of these certificates of good standing, make sure that they're all paid up with the state for their taxes and their meals taxes and that sort of stuff. Because my understanding is if they don't pay the state their meals tax, we're not going to end up getting it.
Right, because we get a cut from them.
So I think that's an important thing that we can, this is not only we need to really even discuss, we can just make sure that it's part of the application process.
Yeah.
Next.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
That's a good idea. We can definitely include that as part of the application process, just, you know, a listing of good standing. Yep, absolutely.
Next, I put down contract out some town services, privatization, contract out, that sort of thing. I know that, I think it was Andy's thing that he passed out the other day, too. I put down, some of these, again, I'm just throwing things out there to see if something will stick, but, you know, we're looking for every dollar and cent that we can find. Landscaping services, I know, we know how tight the budget for the parking wreck in the highway department are. Custodial school services, I know that some towns actually contract those out. Cafeteria services are another thing that some towns do. One of my things when I was running for office was, I saw, and they're out in the hallway now, but, I mean, this building, I think the library is cleaned every night of the week. Sometimes I say to myself, that's kind of, I mean, if you come in here during the day to get your mail or to pay a bill, you realize the traffic coming in here is not all that much. I know it's a new building, we want to keep it up to date and up to speed, but, I mean, you have to ask yourself, in these tough times, does this building need to be cleaned every single night of the week? So, I mean, that's something that I think, I don't even know what the cost savings are or if it will be worthwhile, but I think it's, personally, I think it should be something that could be looked at.
Do you know when, how often do we renew the cost?
Yeah, I actually did, years ago when we had the fiscal crisis, we looked into that. And they, we actually pay, it costs $1,400 a month to have town hall cleaned, a little bit over $1,200 a month to have the library cleaned. Library is cleaned Monday through Friday, town hall is cleaned Monday through Friday. The library does have activity on Saturday, but is not cleaned on Saturday because it's extra cost for that. But the library is busy, I mean, they have, they average 300 visitors per day and town hall is residents. My concern, I agree with you, but my concern would be the restrooms. Where the taxpayers come in, the restrooms are used, and I feel that they should be cleaned. So we looked into it and we looked at the cost savings of three days a week as opposed to two, having them come in and maybe not emptying the buckets, but if they're here anyway. And then the whole restroom issue, and I even talked with the Board of Health and they were, you know, they just felt like it really should be cleaned on a daily basis, because the taxpayers should have a clean restroom. So, it's, you know, that's what we-
How often do you look at the contract? You put it out, does it go out for a bid or does it get renewed automatically?
It gets renewed, yep. Automatically, we look at it and it'll probably go up maybe a percentage. We've had them for nine years, they're excellent. I mean, it's 16,000, it's, what is it, $16,800 a year to have town hall cleaned. You know, it's not a personal, we don't have to pay health insurance, it's a contract.
Yeah.
They do an excellent job. And they, you know, they vacuum the rugs, they keep the building up as well, so it's kind of taken care of and investment. So it is a consideration and I did consider it, and we can consider it again, for sure.
My only thought is that, and I know they do a good job and we've had them for nine years, but sometimes it's worthwhile just to go out and rebid it just to see if you can get a better deal sometimes.
Yeah, we did do that, Andy, actually, a few years ago, and we got a company that was a nightmare and then we got them back.
Really?
But it's probably, you're right, it's probably worth going out again, because it isn't, it's important to do that.
We did it with town council and we ended up staying with town council, but, you know, it's good to, I think, just put it out there.
And our insurance as well, our liability and workers comp insurance. But that's a good, you know, we can definitely go out to, if we maintain that route, we can go out to bid for sure this year. It's in the fall when the contract is up.
Want to keep going, Ken?
Yep. I put down privatized Island Grove snack bar, and that's just, I guess that's just a pet peeve of mine, because I work in the supermarket, that they come into shop and sometimes in the summer they'll come and shop three or four times a day to get stuff for the snack bar, it just doesn't seem very efficient. And I don't even know the inner workings of it or how it works, but I do know that, I think the lifeguards or the kids up there work it. I mean, I would think that at some point, I know the food at, even though the town doesn't run it, but the food at the golf course is basically privatized, the restaurant in there. So I would think that something like this could be done where, even if the town doesn't, my understanding is that it's a break even process right now, the Island Grove, the snack bar. Maybe it could be a thing where, okay, it's break even, but it doesn't cost the town any money because we're not paying the lifeguards to work in there. So, it's just an idea, you know, it could be a great, for someone who's in the business field or someone who's going to college to be cooking a business, maybe they could just, you know, take it over. It's just an idea and aren't even, it's something that we don't have control over ourselves.
But I think, I like the idea, actually. I think at least exploring it, nothing, you couldn't sit down with a parking wreck and ask them if they might think it's a decent idea, too.
Something that I've read about that's becoming more and more popular is the leasing of vehicles rather than buying town vehicles, also equipment. I think, I think we might actually lease some equipment now, but I'm not positive, but I think even police cars are being leased rather than bought. I think using example is Auburn, California, realized the cost of purchasing two new vehicles now is more expensive than leasing the cars over five years. It's due to the inclusion of maintenance cost in the agreement. If you go on the internet, there are numerous companies that lease police vehicles. I mean, I guess it's a side business, so it's obviously very popular to do, so that may be a possibility. I don't even know if we're up to date on, it used to be two new police cars a year at some point, I'm not sure how they do for police cars, but-
Yeah, this year we took it out of the budget because we were tight and we put it on the capital plan, so those two Cruises haven't been purchased yet, they're on the capital plan.
Don't we purchase those vehicles through a series of towns, a group of towns?
Municipal.
Municipal.
Yep.
I mean, we're all, I think we get office supplies the same way.
Yep, exactly.
Same, okay.
Different company, but same idea.
Another thing of mine was surplus equipment, and I used a couple of examples of when I was a youth here in Abington. I know I got my first bicycle at an auction at the police station, they auctioned off all the bicycles that were recovered and whatnot and-
I think that was mine.
It might have been. I didn't steal it, but I bought it, the police sold it to me, so.
The other ones are sold.
And another thing, too, is at my house on Bedford Street, where I grew up, we had two school desks that were bought at a school, they used to throw them out in the front on a Saturday, you know, school desks, you know, $5, $10, whatever they were. So, I mean, I was just in the Board of Health office, actually it was the day of the zip trip, I don't want to talk about that too much, but we had the day of the zip trip, and Board of Health office received a call from the schools wanting to know how to get rid of some old desks, old metal, you know. So even if they just sold it for the metal itself, you could recoup some of the money. It's just, you know, you saw all the new street signs that went up in town probably two years ago, you know, what happened to the old street signs? Did they melt them down? Did they sell them for surplus metal or, you know, you could honestly, I think, sell them on the Craigslist and probably people from, the old Abingtonians that live down in Florida might want Randolph Street or whatever. So it's just, it's just an idea. I know that they do auction some of the larger equipment off, I know there's a new site that we talked about about six months ago, that some of the highway equipment was auctioned off, municipal bid, I think it's called, the towns get together. But this is something that, I mean, it's got to be, what happens to the property that the police owns that's received, recovered, you know, stolen goods that are recovered, what ends up happening to it? I mean, do they ask, does it have to go back to the state? Because back in the day, they used to sell it. I just don't know what happens with it now, so. I don't know if anybody has any feelings on that at all, but-
Do you know what happens now with surplus?
No, I don't, actually. I think the auction is a good idea. I know municipal bid is the auction, heavy equipment on municipal bid, but I think, I like the idea of an auction, because I know around here there's file cabinets or desks that are just antiquated and what, you know, rather than surplus them, it'd be better to, maybe you could have an auction twice a day, twice a year, I mean, along with the hazmat day or something like that.
Well, if we're getting two new police cars every year, what happens to the old ones? I mean, are they traded in or are they-
They're either traded in or they filter down, like we have a, the pool car-
Right.
-was the deputy chief's car.
Right.
But, yeah.
But then there's always two cars, because it filters down, so there's two cars at the end that are always-
Or sometimes they use the parts, depends, I think, on the situation of the car.
Didn't we sell some stuff on eBay that, I thought John had done something on eBay and we were quite surprised, was a new process that he had initiated on.
I think that's municipal bid.
That's municipal bid, yeah.
We were, he was very, and we were very surprised at how easy it went and how much more money we did receive from them.
Yeah, the sewer department recently sold something on there. But I think we should take a look at that.
Yeah. The next thing I have is the green community status and solar panels at landfill. I kind of grouped these together because my feelings of the Sage should be giving the town their recommendation on these and either pushing them or saying that they won't work because we know the green community status, for good or bad, whatever your opinion is, we should, we should get an opinion of it instead of just keep talking about it, we should go one way or the other. We should get a recommendation from, if you want to have a certain committee, a green committee, I would think it would fall onto Sage's, the auspices of Sage, but who knows? But green community status, you get a minimum, I think it is, of $125,000, up to a max of a million dollars grant. So, I mean, that's not, you know, that's nothing to laugh about, so maybe it wouldn't fit in this community, but I know a lot of other communities are doing it, and at some point that well's going to run dry, so I'd rather get a piece of the pie before it does. And the solar panels-
Can I just ask a question on the, oh, I'm sorry, are you still on green?
Well, the solar panels, too, I think they kind of go inside. We talked about that as one of the newer options for the abandoned landfill, I think that would be a great option and I'd love to have Sage put their two cents in for that.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more and those were some of the, I think, everybody's thoughts. I'd like the idea of landfills, I like the idea of solar, but I would also expand it to town buildings. You know, I've got some information that, you know, some businesses, in particular one in Norwell, they basically put solar panels on the roof of that business and the payback was within five years. Between generating all the electricity for that plant, selling electricity back to the grid, and right now I think the government is offering some sort of a tax incentive to do that, and the thing that would have to be investigated, if we did it and that incentive was still there, I've been led to believe that that could be sold to another party that, you know, basically could utilize that. But again, I think that if you just look at all of our building configurations and especially with new high school being built, I know we try to look at a stock plan, but it may be worthwhile to see what it would take to basically, you know, build it with solar in mind, because I do agree with you, Kenny, I think that would be excellent. The other comment would be, just from a procedural, I'd like to see maybe Sage being put as an agenda item, maybe if they'd be nice enough to come in every month, couple of months, every quarter, just to give us an update. Because I think, my understanding is somewhat advanced as far as some of the things that they're thinking about and are getting close to, you know, recommending. And just by way of Sage, what's that stand for, Dory?
Giving Abington with green energy.
All right, so that's like our environmental committee and green committee, so.
I think they'd be thrilled to come in, they would love to.
Honestly, if they didn't want to do these, then we should maybe get some other people that would be involved, we could do our own other committees. If they said it was too big to handle for that committee, maybe we could get something else, maybe we could get a green, you know, green committee, something like that.
Mike?
Just my, Tom, I just, I know it was unintentional, we misspoke and said we're building a new high school, we just had that.
For the-
I know, because we're looking at all of those, I just wanted to point that out.
I'll retract. We may be likely, we may be building a new school.
We're looking at the all schools.
A new school.
All schools, a new, yeah, possibly a new school.
Thank you for correcting me.
There is, there is, they, we did have that gentleman in here that spoke about the green community, I think that was like an all or nothing, but I, there are energy audits and I think a gentleman, one of the younger people on the board, Sage Committee, is doing an energy audit of the buildings. And outside of the green energy thing, there are still grants and stuff available to look and retrofit up. I think that is, I think, is a lot of money that we could save going forward, you know, in the future. The solar panels is a good idea, but I have a limited understanding of what's going on with them right now and the government certainly is pushing them. But there are little things that, right now, because there's not a lot of them out there, they've required the electric companies to buy back a certain amount of kilowatt hours from them. And the, because there isn't that many, they, there's something about certificates and you can sell these certificates, and right now, say, a certificate is worth $175, it could be purchased at $500 and that's why the payback is coming so forward. But as more solar panels come forward, it's going to become less and less, so the payback's going to be extended out. But certainly not, I'm just saying, it looks right now to be more lucrative because the government is pushing so much money at it and as time goes on, it's going to become less lucrative. But that's not to say we shouldn't look at it.
I think Tom's idea, as far as the buildings go, the town buildings go, you know, even if it's not lucrative, it'll be cost savings because you won't be paying for electricity, at least for the buildings that are using it, so.
Yeah.
It's all good, it's all stuff, and I agree, I think Sage can come in and maybe give us an update as to where they-
The whole key is the payback period, I mean, make it economically viable and, like you say, Mike, I think we may be, you know, a little bit past the bleeding, a leading edge.
Certainly worth looking at.
It still hasn't matured technology at this point, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to have Sage come in in the September, end of September, maybe?
Yeah, maybe that second meeting in September.
The 24th or whatever that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
My next item was look for more public-private partnerships, and this could touch off a firestone, but it's basically advertising on buses, backs of scoreboards, signs, library cards, excise, water sewer bills, naming rights, there are innovative programs between the public and private sector that allows municipalities to raise revenue without raising taxes. I think I like the sound of that. All different reasons and to do it, let me just cite an example that was in Sunday's Globe, the town of Plymouth is selling advertising on their town website, starting now, you know, so that's a perfect example, you know, maybe in the back of a library card or on the blank space of your excise water sewer bills, you know, something like that. It's just, it's an idea that's, it's not, it's not something that hasn't been done before, but it hasn't been done here. You know, you see, if you look at the scoreboards at the fields, there is advertising in the bottom of it already, but maybe in the back of the scoreboard or on the school buses, it's just an idea that I don't think that we could authorize it in some departments, but there are some things that I think that we could get back, you know, including the website and maybe some of the bills we send out. It's just an idea, I think it's actually one of the easiest ones to implement. I know there's some, at different points through the schools, there's been, I don't know if it's controversy about the beverage vending machines and I remember maybe 10, 15 years ago, I had to watch a show every morning because they provided free cable, before cable, the town had cable, it was some kind of satellite system on the roof of the building and-
That's true.
-I think all the students had to watch a five-minute news program and the town was wired for cable with, you know, with the money generated through that. So it's just an idea that I think we should really look into. Here's, I guess, the big one that I think might cause some controversy, is called a pilot program. And what it means is payment in lieu of taxes. And there's 84 cities and towns in Massachusetts that have instituted a pilot program, and this is where a nonprofit, mostly hospitals and colleges or universities, agrees to voluntarily contribute a set amount each year. I know we don't have any hospitals, colleges, universities here, but we do have a number of places in town that receive some of the benefits, municipal benefits, that average homeowners receive, but they don't pay taxes. You have the Housing Authority, they're two or three big developers, they also have single houses around town. You have several, call them for better, lack of, maybe halfway houses, I have addresses, I probably have seven or eight addresses, and these towns receive trash pickup from the town, and if they need, if they have an emergency at the house where they need police or fire, they're going to call the average police or fire, but they don't pay any taxes. And there's even things, I'm fairly certain, like the Legion does, and that's a town-owned building, VFW, which may be going on the tax rolls if someone buys it, you know, but there's other buildings, the Knights of Columbus, I think, that, there's certain buildings in town, they don't pay any taxes, so. The idea is to ask them to voluntarily contribute because, not that they're a drain, they don't use all the services that some homeowners, but they do use some of the services, and you just ask them, say, you know, most towns form a pilot program committee and they go and they ask the businesses, I mean, the, these organizations. So I don't know if anybody has any feelings on that, but it's something that, you know, obviously larger towns use it more, but small towns use it, too.
In your research, was Cambridge one of these towns that, I thought I read that, they have large-
Cambridge and Boston, Boston's big.
... educational institutes that don't pay any property tax and I think is an inducement to, you know, not change the law.
It's also charitable organizations also.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea. The thing that struck me when I read it, though, when we name, or we might cite like the Housing Authority, to me, if we start charging, or they start charging, isn't that just going to come back that the taxpayers will have to pay for that? Because now, you know, we've got a nonprofit or a government agency that's actually paying for those services. I mean, it's kind of like the schools or anything, that, you know, if they start charging, the fees are going to go up and somehow, you know, either we're going to pay as a government agency or, you know, the citizens will pay.
I think the Housing Authority is federally funded, if I remember correctly, but just to, my thing is, I don't want to leave any money on the table, you know, that's why we talked about the meals tax and making sure that we get that. I mean, if there's, if someone's willing to pay us money, then let's take it, you know, so that we can maybe not increase the taxes as much as happens every year, so. I mean, there are nonprofits, other than hospitals and college universities in town that receive this benefit of no taxes, and I don't want to, I don't want to pick on churches, obviously, but besides churches, there's a lot of places, too, so.
Just waiting for the lightning bolt, that's all.
I know.
High cloud now.
Another thing that I've talked about is more functions at the senior center. I think this would help pay for the expenses of the building and maybe even completely pay for the cost of maintaining and updating the senior center. And another big thing, too, with the VFW closing, there's a lot of functions there, they have probably the largest function hall in town. If someone picks up that doesn't want to have functions there, this would open up more functions for the senior center. I know that anybody's been up there and as a liar, we've used the kitchen before, the kitchen is a first-class kitchen, it's great for functions. They do have showers up there, I've heard of some weddings up there. I would really like to push more functions up there. And a lot of people say, well, the town shouldn't be in that business, but you don't have to look any further than the town of Norwell or the town of Hanson, Camp Kewaunee is in Hanson, and they have a lot of functions up there, they have a lot of weddings, and they do weddings from soup to nuts. They do a rental, they'll rent the linens, they'll, they can apply for a one-day liquor license, you know, they would come before the Board of Selectmen, apply for one day, that would be part of the package. In Norwell Center, I don't know if anybody knows this, right in Norwell Center, there's an excellent old building called Cushing Center. They have their own committee, it's a town-owned building, they have weddings in there, the Sharon Lakeside Ballroom, I have all, I have lots of forms from these people, these organizations, the towns do it and they have these forms and you fill them out, and we could obviously make sure that if this happens, that the senior center would give first priority to town organizations and they would also give a discount to town residents for rental fees. So if Mike wanted to go in for your 50th anniversary or something, you want to have a big pie there, you know, you would get a discount over someone who's not from Abington. And the plus side is, it could also generate additional revenues for town businesses. All the town businesses are struggling in this economy. You know, if you set it up so that you have a wedding package and you have preferred caterers and preferred flowers, it could be Hutchinson's Flowers, it could be Abington Caterer, that could be, you know, if there's a wedding planner up there or someone, a function director, they could say, well, here's one of our packages, we would recommend that, you know, you use these. There is the issue of liability for alcohol, but both the Cushing Center and Norwell and Kim Kewaunee use the same company, they make, if you're going to rent it and you're going to have alcohol, you have to use their company and that company has the liability policy. They have, the bartenders are all tips certified, so, you know, that would be part of the package. If you want to have alcohol there and you want a one-day liquor license, you come before the Board of Selectmen, get the one-day liquor license and you have to use that company to provide the alcohol service. I mean, I really think that that would be something that we could really, you know, my understanding is they just installed a new floor up there, a dance floor, too, and we all know there's a nice stage for weddings, the kitchen's great, so it's really, and if you go by there, almost every night of the week, the parking lot's empty, it's not being used at night as much as, you know, we would like to see it, so.
I just, I just, I mean, I would be one of those people to say, be careful, because we, as a municipal, should not be in competition with regular business, because a place like the senior center, they obviously don't have the overhead that a, you know, a business that might have a wedding and stuff like that. Now, not that that's a bad idea, but I think the Department of Revenue would have to, municipal bidding is tough and you can't, I don't know if you could just go and indicate, well, you can use this caterer, this caterer, because we want them, or this florist or whatever. I don't know, is they, Camp Kewaunee and stuff like that, are they actually run by the town or are they actually leased out to an outfit?
No, they're run by the town.
Because, see, I could see it if you leased that, if you said to somebody, okay, and put it out to all businesses and they said, okay, this is what we want to do, and then accepted bids and they'd take and run the whole thing, but then you kind of take the senior center, you know, out of the thing. But I, just, my caution would be-
I'm not saying that the town say, here, you have to use these people, but I'm saying the town is, we have some great caterers in town, here's their names.
As part of the marketing.
Yes, true, that's true, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, again, you know, it has to be competitive. My only caution would be, I think the Department of Revenue might want to, or we might want to look and weigh in on some of these things to see if it is possible.
I think that every idea we have tonight should be, obviously, town council and all these departments should be checked, but as I state, this is not anything that's new.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm just, I'm just raising the, you know, the concern, my concern, that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. Next, I have, I don't even know if we do this, I don't think we do, but accept online credit card payments. Do we currently do that if someone wants to pay their excise bill?
Do we currently do that? If someone wants to pay their excise bill, can they do that?
Yep, yep.
And they can pay their taxes online?
Yep.
Well.
Isn't there a fee though, if you do it like that?
Um, I honestly don't know if there's a fee.
Because when you use, people are aware of this, when you use a credit card, the credit card company takes like two or three percent out of every. So if it's a hundred dollars, it might be two dollars, it might be three dollars. So that would be killing off. And I believe, I think you're right, it should be allowed, but I think if you used your credit card, you were charged. So the town ended up with the same amount of money. It didn't, we weren't paying the credit card company, so.
I'll check into that.
We actually, this kind of, the next thing coincides with a letter that we just received from John that he's planning on sending out to people that owe back taxes. He said that some of the places are, let's see, approximately fifty to sixty total, close to half a million outstanding property taxes owed to the town. Some of them go back five or six years. And he was talking about sending a letter that they may go out to bid to. My thought is, I'd rather see the tax money come in. So maybe have a six-month window or a three-month window with a penalty amnesty, is they pay the taxes and they don't pay any taxes. Before this letter goes out, let's give them the option, okay, you can pay this, the taxes that you owe us and you won't have to pay a fee. You have a three-month window to do it, and if you don't, then here's what's going to happen. At least that way, we're not sending them out to, his idea is to sell the liens.
Is that Leo's or not John's?
I thought it was Leo's.
No, well, it's from John, I think.
Okay.
But they're both mentioned in the letter, so I'm not sure. I think you just received the information.
I think they both talked about it in the past.
So maybe before we actually go out and sell a lien, let's see, you know, sometimes you can attract, you know, if you think they're getting a bargain, you know, we'll get our taxes back, you know. So maybe it's just an idea that maybe we should go and have a window. And maybe you have to be, you have to owe a certain amount, X amount of money before you get the tax amnesty. Or maybe you have to be this far behind. But again, this isn't anything new. A lot of towns do this every couple of years. But I'd rather see the money coming in than selling the liens for now. So that's just an idea.
Can I comment? I think that's an excellent idea, Kenny. I just think with the state of the economy, where many people are in trouble with their houses, jobs. When we say sell the lien, to me, that's like selling it to a debt, you know, a collection agency, which I don't think puts the town in a particularly favorable light. I do like the incentive of, for some period, to try to encourage those people to pay. And again, if they don't, then perhaps that's the way to go. Or as we traditionally have done, is put the property in tax title and, you know, so on and so forth. I'm assuming the reason we don't want to do that, it's a very costly process to put in tax title, takes time, money, effort, that if you sell it off, you kind of, you know, remove that sort of expense. But I do like that buffer before you play the heavy, not that maybe we shouldn't, if you're behind taxes five years, you know, maybe there's no recovery. But I'd just like to be a little bit more sensitive to where we are as a society and as a country as far as property ownership.
I know they do make payment plans, but it knows that some of these payment plans have been established, but not kept up to date. Well, maybe this is the time, okay, you have a window and, you know, we want to collect the taxes that are due, you know, and this is a good tool. I think the penalty amnesty is a good tool for recovery of these unpaid taxes.
Might be a better tool than selling them out.
Because I think you're absolutely right that when you sell it, it's not very much on the dollar when they get, you know, they do to a collection agency.
Yeah.
And it might work out better, but we'd have to probably work with Leo, see what his thoughts were.
Yeah.
Knowing Leo, we might have already.
Because he already has a process in place.
What his process is, and maybe we could refine it a little bit better, see what we could do, that'd be good.
Yep.
Even if we publicize it, because I mean, you know, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
The last thing, maybe not the last thing, but one of the last things I have is compost in school lunchrooms. Compost, composting in schools is becoming more and more popular. You save a little bit of money. There's companies that will pick up the compost for less than the cost of the tipping fee the town currently pays. At Trukey's Market, we actually compost now quite a bit, quite a bit of composting because it weighs a lot, you know, if you dump it into the trash compactor, it pulls it out of the trash compactor. It's a separate thing and it's probably twenty or thirty dollars less a ton than the trash. So if we can start composting in schools, and there are grants available for that. Again, this is something maybe Sage can, we can talk about with Sage. I think the other thing too is, I think the school lunchroom has changed a lot since we went to school in terms of, there was a plate and there was utensils and there was a tray and at the end of the line, they took it and they put it in the dishwasher. Now, it's my understanding is that basically everything goes in the trash. It's.
Styrofoam.
Styrofoam, which we all know is not all that good for landfills. So possibly, I don't even know if they still have the dishwashers or if it might, maybe a cost analysis on whether it might be better to go back to the old system. I mean, styrofoam doesn't weigh that much, but it's not exactly very ecological, you know. So and there's a lot of food waste that some schools on their own, smaller schools, actually start their own compost in the back of the schools, you know, as a project. So I think it's something that we should definitely look at. I have a couple more things.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah. We're good.
No, I like listening to them.
The big thing, I brought this up in another meeting and I think John touched upon it and thought it was a good idea, is an incentive program to come up with ideas. We all have ideas, you know, and a lot of these have already been tried and batted about for years, you know, before I was on board. But I think some of the best ideas come from out here, come from town employees and town residents. So, I mean, depending upon what the board chooses to do, if they want to choose anything, but I think we should have some kind of incentive program that we get input from municipal employees and we don't have to limit it to that, we can limit it to residents and somehow reward them with that. I know with municipal employees, you could give them a stipend for an idea that saves X amount of money or you could give them a percentage of the money that's saved. A lot of towns do this. I know Mansfield does it after John left. Fall River does it, and they actually, I don't think they wanted to give cash prizes. They gave, oh, they did, they gave five hundred dollar cash prizes for employees to come up with good ideas. So we all know that, we sit here and come to the town hall maybe once every couple of weeks, but these people are in here every day or out on the job every day and they can see things where there's ideas and ways to save money. And maybe their boss isn't listening or maybe they're too embarrassed to say something or, you know. But maybe this might be a good idea to get some of the ideas talked about, so. That's about all I got.
Did you say this was in place?
Fall River, Mansfield. That's all I've got right now.
I think it's a good idea. I'd be curious to see how they determine.
I'm sorry, the Eastern actually has a formal assistant to suggest ideas that will save money or increase productivity and to reward a cash award for these ideas. Any employee of the town, full-time or part-time, permanent seasonal is eligible to participate. And submissions are encouraged from individuals as well as teams. It's called a smart budget dollars. The award's expected to toll two thousand. It could save half a million dollars. I think that's kind of optimistic. But the first idea saved twenty-six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Somebody five hundred for twenty-six thousand, that's a good deal.
So, I mean, you could maybe make it a certain percentage, ten percent of what you save up to a max, a cap. And I think some of the ideas will come out of the woodwork. I think people have ideas. People, you know, see things on a day-to-day basis that might get overlooked by one of their bosses or something like that. I have one other thing I just want to talk about is grants. I mean, that last grant the town received jointly with Whitman. Now, did the grant, it appears that the grant company came to us with that.
I believe they did, yes. Yep.
So, I mean, there's grants out there that are available to the town. I think sometimes they fall through the cracks. I mean, if that grant company hadn't come to us, we probably wouldn't have known about that. So I don't know, I know at one point years ago, we had a grant writer on call. I think it was Sharon Travis Gay, at one point, I think her name was, when I was on the Sewell Commission. I don't know if we have somebody in-house that can look, search for grants or help other departments, but I really think having a grant writer either on call or in-house, or, you know, even Dory, maybe as part of your job, if you want to take some grant courses or maybe you've already done it, I don't know. But I really think that once the town gets a grant, they're more likely to receive more grants. I think we've learned that. The center of town has some good grants and we got that grant from Whitman. And we all know that, you know, the fire chief, police chief work to get grants, but I think it takes some of the burden off them. If we had a grant writer either on the payroll or on commission, I think that would be a great thing to get. I really think there's a lot of money lost out there. And not just, it could be federal grants, state grants, and even, you know, even private grants possibly, so.
Just on that, I think you're talking about the Community Development Block Grant. I think John, didn't he solicit them? I think he'd worked with that group in the past.
Which community?
Development Block Grant.
Yes.
I think that's how they came in. I think through, and also through the Council on Aging. I think through Sue and David, I think they all kind of.
Yeah.
Got together and decided to hire this company, but certainly successful, so.
Very.
Now, as far as the incentive program, the town of Mansfield, I just found this that I had. Incentives for employees, money-saving ideas have been used in other Massachusetts cities and towns. In Mansfield, the person receives one percent of the annual savings up to ten thousand dollars. That's the way their program works. And that's just for municipal employees, but other towns open it up to municipal employees. And, but Board of Selectmen are not eligible, so.
But maybe if somebody gave us a good idea and they weren't an employee, they were taxpayer, we could make them a member of the board.
That's about all I have. I don't know, you know.
Why don't we do, we'll go through everybody's ideas and then maybe we can go back and maybe rate which ones. Obviously, there's a lot here, so I'm not sure we're going to be able to do every single one, but we have a maybe.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I thought those were very good, common sense, a lot of them are just common sense ideas and some of them I think are pretty innovative, so it's real good. Do you want to do it? You want me to go? Let me see if I can get this fired up.
I think that's the most I've talked since I've been on the board.
Did a lot of work on it.
Just show me.
I did. Good job. Don't look, I was just typing his password in.
Just want to go through a couple of, much sure of their ideas as they are trying to get what may be owed to us by other, either state, primarily state government. So maybe go next here, Dory. Okay, so I'm going to start off that, do we know who this gentleman is? How many would say it was Ben Affleck? Anybody?
Mike Rowe from Dirty Jobs.
Yeah, you already saw it, you cheated.
I know, but I would be able to tell you that.
Go to the next one, three. Yeah, that's right, Andy, it is Mike Rowe. And you probably seen what the hell you got him up there for. But he's the host of Dirty Jobs on Discovery Channel and he's also the narrator of those shows up there. I guess Deadliest Catch is one that I watched. The other thing, he's the pitch man for Ford. But what you might not know is he's a leading advocate for vocational education in the United States. And I just wanted to start off with that because, you know, some of my comments may be misconstrued as what they're not. But I would say that, you know, I've been a big supporter in my municipal career here in Abington on the school committee, serving as the liaison to South Shore Votech and certainly on town meeting floor, a big supporter of the addition down there and the roof that we just did. But why don't we go ahead, Dory? But the first idea is, maybe not to look at the words, but it's really three-fold. I think the formula that's used now, not really by South Shore Votech, but by the state, to assess districts that are in regional school system is unfair. This should not be construed as an attack on the administration of South Shore Votech or the people that are responsible for putting together the formula to Abington or the professional staff down there that delivers services or an attack on trying to reduce the budget of South Shore Votech. All it is, is an effort to simplify the formula to make it more fair to communities like Abington so that we just pay our fair share. And I think you'll see in a minute that we don't. Okay, the Department of Education's goal, and this is again their manifesto, of how they came up with this formula to assess towns for regional school districts, is to ensure that a town requires school contributions that are fairly allocated amongst the various school districts to which it may belong. And then they proclaim the new regional allocation method has succeeded at its goal. I don't believe that's the case. Next. Here's why I'm concerned. And again, you'll see the eight-member districts of South Shore Votech, okay, and have highlighted Abington. Now, this comes right from the Department of Ed. In FY '04, Abington had ninety-two kids down at South Shore Voke. And we were paying per pupil six thousand one hundred and two dollars based on this formula, okay? By 2009, we had increased our enrollment to a hundred and eighteen. The cost per pupil for Abington went up to eight thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Almost twenty-five hundred dollars more in that five-year period, or an increase of forty-one percent. Now, if you go down and people that have been associated with it, Cohasset is a member district, doesn't send that many, but their assessment went up seventy-seven percent in that period. Hanover went from forty-one to fifty-nine. Their assessment went up twenty-two. But I draw your attention to Hanson. Hanson in that period went from an enrollment of fifty-two to seventy-nine. In FY 2004, they were paying five thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. In FY 2009, their per pupil cost for those seventy-nine kids had decreased to three thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars, or a decrease of twenty-seven percent, okay? If you ask me why, I don't really know. I'll tell you that the social-economic conditions that are part of that formula that the state uses. If you look at Norwell, Rockland, Rockland went from ninety-six to a hundred and fifty. Their assessment of their per pupil cost went from seven thousand thirty-eight to FY 2009, seventy-two thirty-one. Went up three percent. And Whitman, just take a look at Whitman. Whitman increased slightly during that period from a hundred and seven to two hundred and twelve. They went from nine thousand ninety-nine dollars to four thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars, or a decrease of forty-eight percent. And this is using the existing complex formula. And you can see the reference if anybody wants to go and check that out. Next, Dory? Now, if you need more evidence, okay, this is what our assessment has been for Abington over the last five years. In FY 2009, and again, this one I believe, I took it from the Department of Ed site. Bob Kelly hasn't validated it for me, but I believe it was a little over a million dollars. In FY 2010, it increased to a little over one point three, or three hundred twenty-six thousand. And you can see the progression that this year, based on the town meeting vote, it's up to one point nine million dollars. It went up nine percent between last year and this year. And again, you know, Bob Kelly, for those of you who don't know, he's the treasurer of South Shore Votech. You know, he'll make the point that your enrollment has gone up and that is true, so your costs are going to go up. But the column to concentrate on is look at D, per pupil cost. How it's increased from a little over eight thousand-ish to twelve thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Now, I just don't believe that that's sustainable over time using this complex formula. What's the impact to Abington from an education viewpoint? In the left, you see the South Shore School Budget, that that in FY 2009 was a little over, was almost ten million. It was nine million nine hundred ninety, nine hundred, nine hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. By FY 2013, it increased to ten thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars. Frankly, that to me, from an educational viewpoint, is a responsible budget, right? You'd expect your schools to increase two, three, four percent per year, my view. Okay, now let's look at what happened to Abington over that period. In FY 2009, our school budget was nineteen million one hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred nineteen. school budget was $19,121,719. In FY 2010, which everybody in this room is acutely aware, we took severe cutbacks from the state. Our revenue was reduced. And consequently, our school budget was reduced 7%, or almost $1.4 million. We also had difficulty in FY 2011, where it went down 2%. Now, you see that we're getting back on the right track, where we're putting 4%, 3%, 4% of salt back into our budget. But my concern is, there's money because of this formula, and it's not South Shore VOTEC, but it's what the state imposes, that is costing us money that's taking it away, I would assume, I'll make the assumption, that it could be used for education for our kids in Abington. As we all know, you could use that for anything as far as the town budget's concerned. Go to the next one, Dory, please. So I think it misses the mark for a community like Abington, the formula. Go to slide 10. So, I think the question comes, what's a simple, fair, equitable formula look like? Okay, to me, it's as simple as, what's the South Shore VOTEC, or any regional vocational, what's their budget to educate the kids that they have in that school? How many kids do they have enrolled in South Shore VOTEC? You take the budget, you divide it by the number of kids they have there, students, and you come up with a per pupil cost. That per pupil cost is used for all member districts, or all in-district members, to multiply by the number of kids you have, to come up with your town's assessment. Now, that's probably too Pollyanna, but frankly, it's one that I think anybody can understand. You've got a cost of service, how many people are you sharing it across? Let's assess them on that sort of a formula. So for example, go back, Dory. So for example, the South Shore VOTEC budget, let's assume was $6,643,526. Approximately, there's 600 kids down there. That would mean that our assessment would be $10,742, okay? And that wouldn't only be for us, right? That would be for Cohasset, Norwell, Rockland, Whitman, the whole eight-member communities. That would lead our assessment to $1,643,526. Go to the next slide, Dory? Okay, so what's the benefit for Abington? This year, it's 1.9 under the current complex formula. If it was revised using a simpler methodology, it would be reduced to $1.6 million. Our cost savings are $258,000. Now, that number I didn't pull out of my hat, that was done by, again, the treasurer of South Shore VOTEC.
What number is that you're talking about?
The $258,000, if we went to a simple formula of what our savings would be versus where we are today. And what he told me is that he hadn't done it in a couple of years, but he went back for all eight district communities, and he redid, redid it based on this simple formula. And he said that five out of those eight towns would see their assessments go down. Now, this is, is big, you know, I think we sit here and how the hell are we gonna change, you know, what the state is, you know, frankly imposing on us? But frankly, it's not South Shore VOTE. If you go into that website and you look at all these districts, to me, you'll see tremendous inequity, where basically, there's a shifting of wealth from what's perceived, what this formula says, of richer communities, to those that aren't perceived as having the means from a fairness, equity viewpoint. And for me, this is just for me, when I look at a Hanson, a Rockland, and Whitman, I see carbon copy images of our town, okay? I don't know, but I think there's also penalties that as more kids move out of your town, it hurts you from the formula viewpoint. And it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy, as your school system potentially isn't perceived as well as other towns, right? It's gonna continue to see less and less, you know, funding. Or in this case, this assessment seems a lot fairer to me. So, again, I put it before the committee to see if they want to take any action with it, but to me, I think, I challenge this in the spirit of fairness, and specifically, not at South Shore VOTEC, but at the state legislature, and also the Department of Ed. I think if we want to go forward and continue to discuss it, I think we should first go to the school committee, potentially, and get their reaction, and also the finance committee, to garner support. Make South Shore VOTEC aware that, you know, we do see that there's some unfairness, not directly aimed at them, potentially look at some of those other member communities who would benefit from a simpler, fairer formula, and then put a plan in place to, to execute to try to get things changed. Again, I understand, it's, it's one of those things, I understand that you had the individual from the Department of Ed come down a year or so ago to explain the formula, and it was categorized to me that nobody really knew what the hell he was saying, and people were falling asleep. And frankly, I've gone through in a couple of times the 24-page document that sort of lays it out, and I, I still not fully understand what, what they're doing. But to me, it's, it's something that is, it's a big-money amount for, for a town like Abington. But again, my assumption would be it would be used for education, but your assumption might be it could be used to pay for capital equipment, you know, capping the down, whatever. But it's been, what, since '04? It's been almost, what, eight years? And we haven't really seen any, any change in, in how we're being assessed. So, that's, that's one idea. The other one is, is kind of on the theme of establishing a good partnership with the state. And I just feel that the charter school funding is, again, the state needs to pay their fair share for the charter schools, and they continue. And again, if you go in and look, they're gonna continue to decrease the amount of money that we get reimbursed to send kids to charter schools. And again, you'll see from these charts what's happening today over a five-year period, where in 2009, Abington was assessed $127,279. Again, it cost us $212 to send the 21 kids to charter schools, but the state reimbursed it at a higher rate. Again, when, when kids start going there, you get higher reimbursements in the early years, and then less as, as they progress through the system. Well, today, in FY 2013, we're up to $226,000. And again, you can see the increased amount in assessments. And again, that's a little bit misleading. It's contingent on the number of kids that you send, but frankly, it's been sort of flat over the last five years, ranging about 21 to 23. Again, the thing that I'm concerned about is the per pupil cost for charter schools, which again, started five years ago at $6,000, and now it's up to almost $10,000. And if you, if you look at the situation at the state level, the charter schools continue to grow as far as, as numbers. Abington, for example, I think had 30 kids that applied that weren't admitted, because they didn't have slots for them. And I believe, over time, that these will continue to grow, both in the capacity kids that they can have, and potentially will continue to see kids go from Abington and other communities to charter school, which I've got no problem with. As an individual, I think that's a family decision, but I'm just saying, state, you started this. I just, you know, as a member of the community, expect to be, you know, reimbursed fairly, and I'm not really seeing it. And again, I think it's a drain on not only the town, but our school system. In fact, if you look at it, we're still down almost $500,000 from where we were, you know, five years ago for Abington Public Schools. We were up almost $800,000 for South Shore VOTEC. We're up another $100,000 here. And if this continues, you know, it's gonna be a problem to fund, in my opinion, you know, the Abington education system. So, those are sort of two broad ideas, and ones that aren't easy, but I think there's some benefit for us, because whether you're young or old, rich or poor, you have kids, you don't have kids. If you have property in Abington, I believe the fabric of the community and what sustains property values is a good education system. And I think we have it in this community. I think we've, we've funded it to the best of our ability, but this is a storm cloud on the horizon that I think we need to take action on, not just Abington, but a lot of communities like Abington. So, enough said.
Can I ask a question? The formula for VOTEC, Social VOTEC, is that the same formula for every
Yes.
vocational school?
Yes.
Regional school?
Yes.
It's all the same through the whole state?
Yes. And to give you an example, Kenny, again, this is just my opinion, looking at the numbers, but if you go up into the northern suburbs, you have a community like Lawrence. Urban, city, not particularly wealthy, where you have is a neighbor next door, Andover. Lawrence pays a small, not a small, but a reduced per pupil cost to send their kids to their vocational, could be Whittier or something like that, where Andover pays 86% more to send their kids. Now, granted, they probably don't send a lot of kids there, but the whole, I think, idea is, again, however the formula determines your wealth and all these other social-economic factors, you know, that excess money is used to support, you know, the poor districts. But in my opinion, if you look at South Shore VOTEC, I think if you look at the eight towns, I think they're sort of the same. I don't think that you need to do that far, you know, for our situation. And again, I just see it as, as a potential issue for us.
They're basically using one formula for the whole state. It's like, just plug the numbers in. It doesn't matter the makeup of the communities or the
I think those are factors they take into account
Yeah.
in assessing it. And it's not just vocational schools, it's the entire
Yeah, it is.
every chap, all chapter 78 is that way. And it's been that way for a number of years, and the battle has been fought a number of times. And I know, back when Whitman was seeing problems, they started what's called the Phoenix Project, to try and get groups of towns to, you know, try and change the formula. And I'm not sure if that's gone anywhere. And then there's the suburban coalition, who has done a similar thing in trying to get, you know, the suburbs to rise up and, and to challenge the state representatives to change the formula, but nothing has happened. And I don't say we shouldn't try, but I wouldn't count on the $200,000 that you said we're gonna save anytime soon, only because
Oh, no, I
what controls, as you know, what controls Beacon Hill, the cities, and the state representatives from the cities, and us out here, it's, it's much more difficult for us to have a voice.
Back when Ed Reform went in, and they were doing a lot of these things, and Jack O'Hearn was the superintendent, a lot of these things came into effect. And they were based on the median income of the population, the property value of the population. And however unfair it was, it wasn't just unfair on the vocational school side, it was unfair on the, on the amount of monies that the state gave to the town. And it's, it is a very complex formula. There's a lot of issues that goes in, and there's a lot of weight putting on, on different factors. There's very few people that can calculate it. And the thing of it is, is I will support you 100%, but I've tried this before, right? And I'm, I will support you, and you can, you can try it, because you're dealing with a legislature that really doesn't want to look at this, in my opinion. I've been told that. They don't want to, however unfair it is. For us to pick up assessment, like the eight towns, there might be four that are gonna increase, but there's gonna four that are gonna decrease. And if you have all the eight towns, somewhat fair, I mean, we, last year, we talked about this in the floor town meeting, you know, we'd have to get all the towns, or the majority of the towns to vote accordingly. It might even be two-thirds of the towns, I'm not sure. But at least the majority to go along. And it just wasn't likely. And I believe that our finance committee throughout the years has tried to, to go. And I know when we had the citizens' task force, we had the people from South Shore VOTEC come in and explain that to the best. But again, I'm, I'm 100% behind you.
Oh, yeah.
If you want to go forth and do this, I just, I just think it's a road that I've traveled before. I wish you luck. I, you know, if you're successful, my hat's off to you.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Mike. Again, it's, it's not a trivial matter.
No, it isn't.
I don't know, though, one piece of information I don't know, I'm not sure if, even if the eight-member communities voted for a simpler formula, whether it would matter or not. I think you have to go to the legislature, Beacon Hill, and you have to go to the Department of Education, and you have to have enough support
Yeah.
to change it. And people need to understand it. Now, I don't know my description, I mean, is the simple formula, I mean, is that understandable to people?
No, absolutely, it's simple.
I still, I still remember his comments to me, that the formula is very, very difficult to understand. So if he, if, if you wanted to have somebody explain to you, if you call Einstein, that was, that was his, his quote to me, that it was that difficult. There was only, there's only one or two people.
There's one person.
Yeah.
That's what I've always heard, there's one person.
Yeah, which, which, which makes you a little bit nervous.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should contact that one person.
Well, that's another approach.
You.
I don't want to follow that approach, but
But no, it is, it's a tough one. I would like to see us, you know, I guess, I guess, I guess, you know, it is, it's in the hands of the legislature. And what I've been told is they just don't want to look.
Is something you're thinking seriously about, Tom? I would suggest you check with the folks in Whitman that starts the Phoenix Project, and see if that's still an ongoing thing, because there's strength in numbers, obviously, but
I would just like direction from this committee, to go to the finance committee. I've talked a little bit to Maureen, and she's been helpful in providing some information. Go to the school committee, and see if there's any support. I mean, I've been in organizations that you log on their website, and the first thing they say is, hey, look, there's this issue we want you to review, and it feels, feels strongly about it. Here's a letter to take, you know, and here's the people you address it to, sign it and send it to them. And frankly, if there's enough people, you know, our representation will eventually change it. Again, South Shore, these eight districts aren't, but you know, if, if you get enough people and, and you attack it, and
I'd certainly support and make a motion, if we need a motion to, if you want to go move forward.
I don't know if you need a motion, but I just more of a sense of the committee.
I was just wondering, I did talk to Bob Kelly, and he said that he is going to bring this up, which might be something you want to attend at the next school board meeting of vocational school.
Yeah.
Which is televised, you know, fairly frequently on our website, so, just to let you know that that's something that we could go forward with.
And Bob has been extremely supportive. He's a little bit like Swissel, and he doesn't really take a side. He's just abiding by what
No, he's a pro.
the state regulations do. And he'll be upfront. He says, you know, okay, if it helps Abington, you're probably not gonna get support from Rockland, Whitman, or Hanson, right? Because theirs is going up. So, so that's why I think you need to attack it at a higher level. And it's, it's a bit broader than this. It's just kind of the way we, we sort of work as far as, you know, people that can afford it are used to subsidize people that can't, which, you know, I sort of support in principle. But if you look at the numbers here, this is getting, to me, pretty severe. And, you know, I think, you know, we've got the Abington schools, we're starting to get them back on track, but this potentially is they can, is we continue to see money drained away is, is a risk.
I would say it's drained away. I mean, those are Abington kids going to South Shore VOTEC, and those are Abington kids going to the charter schools. Charter schools are also public schools.
Yeah, but fair share.
I understand.
Wrong phrase, Maureen. And again, people going to charter school, again, I know all the, you know, chastises that I'm not in favor of charter schools. That's not the case. I've sent, you know, one of my kids to private school for a while, and again, I believe it's the, the choice of the family and the individual to do what you think is best educationally for your, your, your child. All I'm saying here is, let's make the formula, and let's just pay our fair share. And I don't think that's happening because of
And again, just charter schools are public schools. They're not private schools.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they're, and if their per pupil cost, what did you say, they were $8,000, $9,000?
Almost $10.
$10. Abington's, actually, in 2011 was $11,400. So, it's still less than what the Abington schools' per pupil cost is.
I would just want to check that.
That's right from the Department of Education.
Yeah, I'd want to check it with our superintendent, because when I've been to forums, I've never heard them say that we spend $11,000 per pupil. I think that's an integrated cost.
Depends on what the issue is.
Well, it is, it's integrated cost.
So it includes South Shore VOTE, and includes
No, no, I don't think it does that.
I think it might, but
The, and I do, again, I salute you and I support you going forward with this, but if it was one thing, my opinion, or my experience of being nine years on the school committee and involved in the town, this, the school, the state mandates have been crushing us. Unfunded liabilities, unfunded mandates coming forward to us. I would suggest that if we want to pursue something that would really make a difference in this town, there's a petition in the legislature to take over public education and get it out of our hands. Let, let them take over, let them fund it, put all the mandates they want. 65% of our budget, I think it is, or 60%, and we can deal easily with the 35%, the police, the fire, the schools, and the other. But again, that, that probably would wouldn't go where, but I think, I think you're going to fast see the town that this, the mandates and the special education needs coming forward, and the fact that, you know, our special education is just going up and up and up and up. It is going to crush us. It will eventually.
Yeah.
Well, that's another area that
Well, no, no, but I'm just saying, for the town, we're looking at what we can afford and what's unfair we're coming forward. But their mandates have been very unfair, right? Dead fastly, and they still, I think, I thought that Proposition Two and a Half, one of the stipulations of that was if they, if they proposed a mandate, they would have to fund it. And that's never been paid attention to from the legislature. And it's one of the many reasons why we're in this. But go for this one first, and good luck.
Do you want to, Ken, sir?
I would say, rather than going to the school committee and the finance committee, because honestly, it's a no-brainer. It really is. I mean, I don't think you have to sell it to them. I think, I would just rather see our legislators come in and talk to them about this, and just tell them how important it is for the town as a whole.
Yeah.
You know, we take a stand and say, look, for the, for the, for the future of the town, and for the residents and the students, and for the school committee, and for the finance committee, this is what we would like to see.
Yeah. I don't disagree with you, Kenny. I do think it's a no-brainer. But I just, as you have, served in other committees, I think it's more of a courtesy to let them know. And I think when you do put together the plan, I think it's got to be integrated, that you've got to get a lot of people doing a lot of petitioning to try to get things changed.
Oh, definitely.
And if you get the support of the school committee, twenty-two hundred families, potentially, you know, the finance committee, the selectmen, other organizations in town to help us out, I think
But again, Tom, it's got to be broader than just Abington.
I understand, but
We have one state representative and one state senator, and there's forty state senators and one hundred and sixty state representatives. So we're the only ones who are up there talking. It's not
Well, that's why you saw that at least as a starter, is to talk to the other towns and see if you can get any
And that's a good idea.
You know, and then, then from there, go on to other towns that we think, you know, might be interested in helping us.
Just so you know, we had that citizen task force, and it was a lot of people. When we did invite to that group, which was
It's the Lord.
We did invite them to one of our meetings, which over a hundred people showed up at that particular meeting. It was over a hundred. Most of them were, were young people, were kids in schools. And Alan McCarthy was our state representative, if you get that, Mike Morrissey was the other one. And basically, we brought forth the funny formula, because it was, brought forth how unfair it was at that point in time. And if I remember what Alan said, he just said, look, we're a small town. We can try. We hear you. We know it's unfair. But what you're up against in the Boston legislature and stuff like that, it just isn't going to go anywhere. But again, that's not to say we can't try again. But I just, I just want to share that one.
If you have eight towns for VOTEC, it's probably going to be three or four different state representatives.
Right, right, right. Try it.
But again, that's why I would encourage you to check with Whitman and see if that Phoenix Project is still in effect, because they were trying to reach out to other towns too, and bring people in and petition the legislature. And it's not that it hasn't been done before, and it shouldn't be tried again. But my, my point is, again, it's just Abington doing it, it's, you know, I think you're spinning your wheels. I think you need to reach out to other towns.
But you know what? You could
Yeah, it's a start.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
As you said, I think it's a courtesy. You should go to the finance committee. You should go to the school committee. Make sure that they're on board with it also, and then start to branch out.
Don't forget, as Tonto said to
The Lone Ranger.
The Lone Ranger. It's just, not just me, Kemosabi, so
Kemosabi.
Even though, that's right. Even though you're saying, you know, go, go do it. But I'm going to look for support from, you know, members of this board as
I think you better already.
Yeah, you do.
I'd help you in any way I could, Tom, honestly.
Okay, thank you. Do we just click at one more to, I keep on going.
One minute, forty-five minutes. Do you have anything?
Amazingly, I'm quiet tonight. I'm listening.
I did have a few. Some of them have been tried before, but I thought maybe it's worth taking another look at. I know we've talked about regionalization of town services before. I was thinking inspectional services especially, you know, health agent, building inspector, that sort of thing. If you could regionalize with two or three towns, I think you save costs there. And also, I know there are some towns, Ken, you probably know this better than I, but who have regionalized trash service too.
Absolutely.
And, you know, you might, you might
I do think that when our trash contract comes up the next time, you know, in three years, I live a three-year contract, just that I would hope that maybe Rockland and Whitman might want to join in, because, I mean, things go smoothly. I think they've gone, they've gone fairly smoothly in this new process. I think other towns will probably want to jump on board, so it might save some money there. And I know that the Board of Health has, there is a regional bid process for tipping costs. They're trying to get someone to accept different towns' ways. And I know Abington put their name in to see if they could get a better price through a regional bid process, so.
Another one I had was sharing of services with the school department. I know we shared, Dorie, some IT work with the school department and
Well, yeah, they helped us out for a while when we didn't have a network administrator.
Yeah.
But they, you know, they have their two IT people that are really busy, out of stray kind of thing. But they've been very helpful coming and helping us, and the fire department especially.
And I know the sewer department helps out in other areas outside of the sewer department and
Oh, yeah, the sewer department has been tremendous in the helping of the barrels, still, every day, getting them to the right spots, making it a smooth transition. So a lot of thanks goes out to them.
I was also thinking we still need to continue on a path to consolidate into a Department of Public Works. I think there'll be cost savings there with the highway, the parks, and possibly the sewer all under one umbrella. Not that I'm proposing this, I'm just, Kenny's thoughts were to bring whatever we heard out there as far as trying to save money or raise funds, but there's the Community Preservation Act. I know we've talked about it in the past. That's where the town can assess between one and three percent on the real estate taxes, and that money that is raised is matched, a portion of it by the state, and it allows for the preservation of open space, creation of affordable housing, and the development of outdoor recreational facilities. To get that done, it needs to be presented to town meeting, and if approved at town meeting, it goes on a general election ballot, so everybody in the town gets to vote on it. We talked about privatization, that was something else I had thought about. I know in the past, we've reviewed the town-owned lands.
Mm-hmm.
And we've sold off parcels, and I don't know if, when's the last time we did that? If that's something we could maybe take a look at, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, to get together a list of town-owned lands, some that are, what's in tax title, what's not, what's available, some are landlocked. But yeah, take a look at the whole picture and see where we stand.
And if you could sell some off, or whatever money was raised as a result of that, you could use towards capital projects
Right.
or something like that. And then, again, just an idea, but review once again the possibility of a sixty-forty split in the health insurance. I know we went through a try at that a year and a half, a year ago, but it didn't quite work out. But, you know, it's something, I'm not sure how people are, if they're happy with the way the health insurance plan is now, or
I don't think they're happy with the way it is now at all, no. My understanding is, you know, it may come up again in January to see which way, you know, what's going to happen. So
Okay.
I think, you know, things may be back on the table in January.
Okay.
Is that, is that the first opportunity you can do to revote it? How does it work?
I believe so. I believe it's January.
That was by state regulation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So those were just some of my thoughts.
I will note that the Community Preservation Act, I think it was in Randolph, they just opened up a dog park with those funds.
And it, you know, true.
Absolutely true.
It, it's something, you know, obviously, it's an increase in your property taxes, which I'm not a big fan of, but it is designated for a particular use. You also can exempt certain individuals under that, or you can exempt a certain amount of money. If you don't want to tax the first hundred thousand dollars of everybody's assessment, that would go untaxed. So there's different, you know
That's something we look, look into, I would
Yeah.
Above a certain value.
And the thing I do like about this, unlike the, Tom, meals tax, is that the town as a whole gets to vote on this. It's just not town meeting. It goes to the ballot on a general election ballot, so everybody who comes out to vote can either vote for it or against it. So it's not, and it's not like an override election where you have a special override election. It's, it's on the regular general election ballot.
Yeah.
I was just joking there with it.
No, no, that's, that's, that's a fair shot across the ballot. That's fine. But, but the comment I'd have here is, is I agree with you that it probably should be considered. But based on my last theme, is my concern with this is when it started, our partners, the state, said X, we were going to provide you
I agree.
so much, and when, when the money, when the money runs out
And it has run out.
You're stuck with, with the increased tax to citizens, and you're not getting the benefit back from the state.
Well, you're not getting the matching funds.
That's right. So
And as I said, I'm not
I think that's part of the debate when we
Yeah, I'm not proposing it. I'm just, it was something that
Well, you have it on your list here, so
Kenny asked for ideas, so
Okay.
And I would say this, as far as that goes, there are towns who have adopted it and then gotten out of it. So you
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to.
You don't have to stay if you don't want
Yeah, that was the thing that I found intriguing, was you don't, I think it's three years that you have to stay with it, and then you can get out. So the fact that the funds were to dry up, and again, I'm not advocating pro or con, if you did go into it, or chose to go into it, and the funding dried up, you could get out of it, so.
Yep, and towns have, as a result, because the funding did dry up.
But that would be something that would be highly controversial in this town, no doubt about it. And we would have to have, ensure that the people were comfortable and given them enough public hearings and public notice so they knew what they were voting on, and then let democracy
And I think there's a lot of great examples. You go to Situate, that whole Drift Way was redone with
No question.
community preservation funds, and, so, yeah, I think it's something
This could be used for some of the things that are on the capital plan, too. Is that correct? Like rehabbing the arch, memorial arch. You could probably use this money for that, couldn't you?
Development of outdoor recreational facilities. Yeah, I think preservation of open space. I think there was a historical component to it, too. I'm not sure.
I think there is, so.
So where do we go?
Yeah, how do you want us proceed here?
Just personally
Tom's going to carry the ball on the chapter seven.
Well, no, I, I think what typically works is to maybe just itemize all the ideas, like on a list, maybe like a spreadsheet, and then come back or advise, you know, the town manager, assistant town manager, what you think the priorities that we should
Yeah, I think we need to set priorities as to what is more important.
Yeah, because I think some of these, we should do like immediately, and others either more long-term, or maybe don't have the benefit that, you know, may have. And then, you know, at another meeting, we can come back and, you know, kind of post a list of which ones we're going to go after and
Yeah, because some of them are more or less out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
You know, maybe the school board, or the health board, or something like that.
Well, a couple of things we should do right now, I feel, is that we should maybe enter into a tax amnesty period, like we talked about, you know, before that letter goes out.
I, I, me personally, I'd be hesitant to do that, only because I'd rather hear from Leo and see what
Right.
what the implications would be as to something
I believe that would be a policy, so to speak.
But, but the point, the letter's not going out immediately, is it?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so I think, yeah, I mean, just, maybe just a brief, yeah.
Before the letter goes out, what's it going on?
I'd agree with that.
Well, maybe we can put that on for, maybe Leo could come into on the tenth?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And we can talk about that. Okay.
I'd be thrilled.
You'll be thrilled. Put them first.
Yeah, I'll put them on first. Special courtesy.
How about making sure that as part of the renewal application process, that the town contact the, what does it contact? The Commonwealth to make sure that all meals taxes
Part of the revenue.
That they're in good standing.
Certificate of good standing. I guess you could just make that part of the renewal process.
Yes, that they, I would say that, they would provide that.
They have to provide a certificate of good standing. It's on them to provide the certificate of good standing
Yeah.
to the town, that they pay their meals tax.
Yeah, that's a, I like that idea.
Okay, so it's, it's like if somebody comes for a commercial license or whatever, to make sure they pay their property taxes and that sort of a thing, yeah.
Their insurance is all up to date, and they're also, that they're up to date on their meals tax.
Says each year, cities and towns require restaurants and businesses that pour and sell alcohol beverages to renew their licenses. Part of the renewal process, cities and towns could require these types of businesses to supply a certificate of good standing. It basically says that they're up to date on their taxes. And anybody can request that, any taxpayer can request to look at that certificate of good standing.
Right, that's, because we ensure that their local taxes are up to date, but we don't have any idea about the state.
I think that's when you go after right away.
Personally, I'd like to get into this cost savings incentive program, and work on that possibly.
I just, and I, you know, probably
I'd like to get some more information. Maybe you could get
We really shouldn't establish policies on a, you know, just looking at, if that's considered to be a policy, but we might want to get some input from the administration or see what their thoughts are. But definitely going forward, looking into it, yes.
I'm not, I'm not talking about making decisions tonight, but I'm telling you, that's I think that's a key priority.
Yeah, yeah.
Which one was that?
That was the certificate of good standing for
Oh.
meals tax. And then the cost savings. Can you get some more information on that one? Maybe get
From the other policies the towns have?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, you know, at some point, I think, the green community status and so, again, it would be nice, I think, if we had an update from the
Now Sage is going to come in on that.
Sage.
Yes, twenty-fourth.
Okay.
What are the other public-private partnerships? Talked about that, website ads, that sort of stuff. I don't know how the board feels on that. I think that, I think they feel favorably, but I'm not sure.
I think it's a good idea.
I'd like to explore it a little bit more, obviously, and see, you know.
I'd like to, for some way we could establish how much revenue we're actually talking, you know, coming back. We had a rough idea. I know it's not going to be to the penny, but
I think that depends on what you decide to put
Yeah, I mean, I
Advertising on it.
I think the advertising on the town website isn't
No, 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 and I agree. I agree with that. You know, some of the other stuff, I think we talked about putting stuff on buses and stuff, but, no. All right.
Maybe I, excuse me, Mr. Chapman, maybe I could check with Virtual Town Hall. Maybe that's who we use for our website. Maybe they, they have
Oh, that's a good idea.
maybe they have an idea
That's good, that'd be great.
Of what it could generate.
You don't want frame refrigeration on one of the buses? Sure?
Well, I'm not sure. I don't know
Back of the bus.
We don't own the buses, we lease the buses.
As long as you, as long as you pay for it.
I know that.
Joe would like that.
Mm-hmm. At least the town website we can look into initially, and then
That's a great idea, Dory. I thought, I'm glad I thought of it.
Glad you thought of it, too.
And maybe when Leo's here on, at the next meeting, we could talk to him about, on the excise tax bill, as if there's something, sometime. I'm not sure what kind of advertising he would want here.
Yeah, right, because I know there are requirements.
Yeah.
We'd have to get information on recycling, on the school lunch program and stuff you spoke of. And again, would be up to
I think the Board of Health and Sage Committee can be involved in that.
Yeah, Sage.
Because I do know WAMIS, WAMIS schools went to Styrofoam-type containers primarily because it was more cost-effective than maintaining the dishwasher and the soap and the temperatures, everything. They had to do with it, and it just seemed to be a cleaner operation. It was less
But you also know, in your line of business, that the dishwashers today are a lot more a lot more efficient than the ones of old, so if you could retrofit, there's, I have two examples I'll bring to the meeting. We talked about that two different towns.
Yeah, again, it's, it's, again, it's just, you know... Surplus equipment, too. I think that's something maybe the town manager could ask him to work on.
You can probably take a look at that, right?
All surplus equipment goes through here maybe somehow to see if it's worth, you know, see if it's valuable, or see if there are other options, rather than what you're doing with them now.
Rather than just surplus. Maybe auction.
Exactly. We're gonna clean the town hall once a week now, right?
No.
Oh, no? Okay. The pilot program's a biggie. I don't know if anybody wants to, that's kind of a touchy subject. I think they don't wanna a lot. Don't wanna talk about it, but, I mean, do have a list of properties. There are six, six different group homes in Abington that receive these services.
How much would you be thinking? Again, my interest would be, my interest would be, because I think to Tom's point, a lot of them are subsidized by the state and stuff like that, so if we charge them, we charge more. Somewhere, it's gotta be paid for. I, again, I would, I don't know, I don't know if we can find out how much we're talking about.
And it's a voluntary thing, also. You can't oppose that on some...
I don't know too many people that volunteer to pay money.
Well, now, some do.
So, now, just, let's, this is an example. There's six group homes in Abington that receive trash pickup. You know, what would be wrong with sending them a bill for the trash pickup? They are a business. They might not be a nonprofit, but they're a business. I mean, they're considered a business.
I think the question would be, how much money are you talking?
Well, they either provide for their own trash pickup, or they, I'm just using this as an example. I don't wanna leave any dollars on the table.
No, you're right. I, I know that, but I just, I, you know, I didn't make a decision. I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like to know what we're talking for.
Yeah, who, who you're talking about, what, what services would be affected.
But John or Dory might be able to help us out with some of that information.
Let me just go over some of the other ones real quick, and if you guys, give me the thumbs up or thumbs down. Contract out some town services, landscaping, custodial school services, and then I think Andy had some of the other ones, too. Island Grove Snack Bar.
I like that one.
We could simply just ask the Park and Rec to look into that.
I think we should, yeah, if, if that's something we're looking at, we should go to Park and Rec and talk to them about it before.
Or just ask them to look into it.
Yeah.
I mean, is, do we wanna vote on that, or do we wanna just...
I have no, I mean, if you wanna vote on it, I have no problem asking. I think that's what would be the first step I'd have to do, yeah.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what, no, what are we doing?
Asking the Park and Recreation Commission to look into privatizing the snack bar revenues.
Yeah, it, all right.
Just looking to see if it's a viable option, feasible.
A feasibility study.
Anything else?
See any, how, I mean, do we vote for all this in the week?
What's that?
Do we need votes for all these? I mean, I'll support it.
Well, if we're gonna ask them, I think we should take a vote.
All right.
Do we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Unanimous?
This was something that I just threw out there, lease rather than buy town vehicles and equipment. I don't know. Look into that, the surplus equipment. We're gonna ask John to look into.
Well, you have to do some sort of analysis.
Yeah, I, I think, I did talk a little bit to my brother about that, and, but again, times have changed and stuff, not, not bad looking into it, but we do buy the vehicles, you know, pretty reasonable through a cooperative, some, and, you know, police, police cruisers, you never know what they're gonna have to go through, so, whatever, we can look into it.
Those are mostly the vehicles we're purchasing anyways, the police vehicles. We're not buying buyer trucks every year.
Yeah, I believe they're frontline vehicles. They usually have, they want two per year, right, to keep...
Yes, yes. Yep.
Well, then, I'll make a motion that we ask the police chief to, to give us his opinion on whether it would be better to, to look into purchase, leasing rather than...
Yep.
If there's a benefit to leasing rather than purchasing police vehicles.
Right.
That's a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Unanimous?
One of my big ones was the more functions of the senior center. And again, I don't, does the senior center fall under our jurisdiction, or is it the council?
I believe it would be the council, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it's a town-owned building. I know, I know this is a little bit of a subject, but we talked earlier, way in the past, about regionalization, where Whitman is so busy and Abington has the facility, and I don't think that was done in the appropriate manner, but maybe we wanna talk with the, the council on aging and see how they, you know, maybe that's something with your regionalization and you're getting the senior center busier. Maybe that's something to think about, where they have so many events and tight space, and we have the space.
That's certainly a viable, I, I would salute that. Look to regionalize, and it might not go anywhere, but it's certainly worth investigating.
Bring it up again, maybe, yeah. Maybe it's time to look at, look at it again. I don't know if you wanted to do a joint meeting with the council on aging, or at some point down the road?
No, they have a director that handles, the council on aging director?
Yes.
Handles basically...
She handles the day-to-day, the running of the operation, the scheduling, all that.
I mean, if it's agreeable to the board, I could meet with her and discuss this and see if, you know, if there's an option like that, yeah, if that's agreeable to the board.
And how would you get the ball rolling if, you know...
Well, just see if she thinks it's something that would work and, you know...
She'd probably have to contact other surrounding towns and see if they had an interest or something.
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about two different things. You're, you're talking about regionalizing.
You were talking about regionalization. Kenny was talking about getting more use out of the senior center.
Exactly.
By leasing it out to...
Although that could kinda coincide if...
You should probably talk to them, talk to her about both.
I have no problem meeting with her and discussing if that's agreeable to the board. That's fine.
I just, I think you should also have either John or Dory, just from the administration when you meet, do meet.
Sure.
And then how are we gonna do the cost saving? We're gonna ask John to look into that, the cost savings, the new revenue gen, the incentive program? We're gonna, yeah. And I was, I'll come back with...
Yeah, if you can get some of, Mansfield's and Eastern, you said was the one that had the program, right?
'Cause we'd have to, we'd have to have some kind of, what, structure or policy.
Yeah.
Right, but we could actually be original and do something on our own, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it's nice to look and see what other towns are doing. Makes it easier.
And then the public-private partnerships, we're just gonna, what was the status of that?
Oh, we're looking at the website at least initially.
Start with the website and then go from there?
Yeah, Dory's gonna have to contact...
So if I make a motion to entertain putting advertising on the town of Abington website, I could do that?
To, to look into it, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, Dory, you had said she was gonna call Original Town Hall.
She was gonna call Original Town Hall and see.
Yeah, that's fine.
And maybe he can put me in touch with some communities that do it.
That's all I got on my list. And Tom's gonna...